And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Now can you hear me? Okay, so tonight, there are two students that we're going to be recognizing in this meeting. The first student of those who talk about is the recipients of the MASSS Certificate of Academic Excellence. MASSS is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. They have an award that superintendents have a discretion to give out based on the number of graduates in the, in the building. In Middleborough, based on the number of graduates we have this year, I have the pleasure of awarding one student this award. This award will be given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. Things I can consider are the three-year cumulative GPA or grade point average, ranking class, and then there's some discretion. So naturally, I worked with Principal Paul Branigan. And tonight, we will be honoring tonight's student, Dante Di Alessandro. Now, before you come up, I want to say a little bit about you, and then I'll go into a, we'll take a photo. Dante is one of the top students in the class of 2024. Academically, he has taken six AP classes for currently. And will complete the biomedical pathway this year as he's enrolled in the capstone course for Project League of One. Currently, he's working on this capstone project that will involve hosting a blood drive for the American Run Cross this spring. He's taken very high level courses throughout his career, and he's maintained an outstanding record, very strong GPA and class rank. He is not just a student. Athletically, Dante is a three-season athlete in MHS for cross-country and track and field. He's been recognized by the social elite and has attended numerous state meets for his outstanding performance on the track. My favorite of all, he is a leader. This is where he truly shines. Dante serves as the member-at-large for the class of 2024, serves on the Student Council Executive Board, affectionately called E-Board. Dante has chaired numerous events and was a major part of the leadership team for Start Strong. This is the program where our high school students welcome our ninth graders at the beginning of the year. He served as our boys' state representative through the American Legion and represented Middleborough High School at Student Government Day at the program at the State House. He's very active in every activity at the high school, and he's truly one of the most respected and spirited students on campus. Dante also is active in his church. He is committed to the importance of giving back and community service. He will always take part in a service project and takes on numerous leadership roles in the planning of many of our events. He is also an Eagle Scout, and he was named Eagle Scout of the Year. So with that, I know Dante is applying to numerous colleges with a potential focus on biochemistry and pharmacology for his college major, and I'm sure he will continue his success there. With that, I would welcome up Dante Di Alessandro. Congratulations. And in an excited fashion, we have more than one student to celebrate tonight. This time, I will welcome Principal Paul Branigan up to the table to tell us about Lucy Texera. And we'll do the same. I will have Mr. Branigan tell us a little bit about you, Lucy, and then invite you up to the stage as well.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm really excited to be able to share the exciting news that we received back in the middle of September when we learned that Lucy would be identified as a student with commendation for her outstanding performance on the PSATs that she took in grade 11. And I just want to share with you what that means. In April, then Lucy was one of 50,000 students across the United States who had the highest scores from their identified high schools. 16,000 of those would go on to be designated as semifinalists for the National Merit Scholarship. The other 34,000 high performers are now being named commended students based upon the National Selection Score Index of 207. And just to note that Lucy's index score was 210. Participants who scored above the commended student selection index score, they scored high enough, not high enough as a National Merit Scholar, but ultimately as a commended student. So Lucy is one of 34,000 students from the United States who are being commended this year, this fall, for their outstanding work on the PSAT exam during their junior year. I want to share with you, if I may, just a little, a quote from the National Merit Scholarship Foundation, which I think is really testimony to really Lucy's work as a student. Just a little bit about Lucy is that she's an incredibly high-performing student here who is incredibly driven, incredibly talented, and she is very involved with our theater program and the fine arts program here at the high school. From acting onstage to leadership within the speech and theater program, she's involved with it all. And it really is so much of the work that has been done to really bring the arts back to the high school has, is really because of Lucy's commitment to that. That commitment she has within the passions that she has and she loves is also then transferred in what she does in the classroom in every class that she's in. But here's what I just wanted to say, that Lucy is one of those being named as a commended student who have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. That Lucy is one of the students who represents a valuable national resource, recognizing accomplishments as well as the key role that they play in their academic development is vital to the advancement of educational excellence across our country. We hope that this recognition will help broaden Lucy's courage her to, as she continues to pursue her academic success and whatever she pursues. So Lucy, on behalf of all of us here, we want to congratulate you for being named the 2023 National Merit Scholar Commended Student. So congratulations to you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to comment on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Next up is report from the school committee members. Does anyone have anything from the school committee they wish to add?
Mr. Prowl, go right ahead. Two quick things. One, I want to thank the soccer coaches from the high school and the middle school. They took all their teams to the Revs game last Saturday in the rain and had a great time. Brought all the kids back. All the kids had a great time despite the rain. And it was actually a very well-run event, and I was very happy with all the, all the attendants and the coaches. The other thing is I got a question today. Where is it? It was about the safety audit. And let me see. So here we go. Is going to be any more information shared to the public at the school committee meeting regarding the safety audit that recently took place?
Yes, so initially, yes, there will be a presentation on, you know, the safety audit findings at school committee. I was hoping to do that at the next meeting. I still don't have the report from the group, from ACT Act. So I did, I emailed earlier this week, and I anticipate having it by the end of the week. It is Thursday evening, so I'll certainly stay in touch with all of you about that and send a reminder tomorrow. But I anticipate having the draft at any point, actually not the draft, like the, you know, the complete report. So once I digest that report, we will be, I believe, we'll be scheduling an executive session to talk. And then I, you know, we will have some type of presentation from there so that the public has some information.
And when we did the executive session, that the executive session will more than likely include members of our DIRTT team. And in the past, I've always done the two chiefs, because quite frankly, they have a better sense of safety than we do, right?
Yep.
And then the chief of police and I have had a conversation in the past. And then there'll be a more generalized report given to the community, because obviously, certain things about safety, we're not going to have a conversation in public.
Yep, thank you.
No problem. Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, I, just to follow up with that, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I was going to ask about the safety audit as well, but also to piggyback on the safety audit. The director from EMS for Coastal Medical in Middleborough, I think he spoke to you. He reached out to me. He wanted to maybe do some training in a fundraiser to get what's called Stop the Bleed kits, which I thought was a great idea. It kind of piggybacks with the whole school safety in case something would happen. So I was wondering if, he said he would be more than happy to come and speak to the committee. So if we can maybe put that on the agenda at some point.
Sure, I was going to do, is it, may I talk on this item? If it, I was going to bring this up during my report or the beginning of my report, but I wanted to give you all the recap of our professional development day that occurred yesterday on the first. The entire day was safety-focused, all hazard safety-focused. I do want to take a minute to thank not only Coastal, but the Middleborough Fire Department. They came, the afternoon session was really a round robin of four different sessions. And Coastal and the Fire Department led an entire training on Stop the Bleed. And this was a conversation I did indeed have with one of the EMTs there. We're going to be looking into procuring additional supplies for our orange buckets. But it was also training that I think a lot of staff felt like would be useful beyond the school context. So it was very, there were live demonstrations. I got to be one of the volunteers. It was very exciting. The afternoon was divided into four stations, so that was just one of them. The other stations were, one was on psychological safety, so not just, you know, actual, you know, emergency response. We also had the health, our Health Services Department, Paula Magnasco, lead small groups on the CPR basics, choking, EpiPen and allergy and seizure protocol, which also was information that really extends beyond the school wall. It's, you know, particularly helpful. And then lastly, we did have some small group practice in barricading doors and stuff, which is something you really do have to practice doing. So we had that hands-on training. I wanted to extend my thank you to Andy Deisel and the entire DIRTT committee. They were truly fabulous. The whole training was, I thought, very impactful and meaningful. So it was a whole day, but I did, I did, oh, and I'm sorry, we also did the mark bullying presentation as well. I wanted to make sure to talk a little bit about that. Mark is a curriculum that we've onboarded to specifically implement within our school system. So in order to do that, you have to train everybody in that, so we had that as well. So it was really a smattering of all different, everything from emergency response to the ABCs of what our responses to situations are and that conversation with Coastal. So I've already looked into, I have a meeting scheduled on Monday. I've already looked into how to fund the additional supplies. Coastal very generously offered to, you know, help fundraise. What I want to do is take a look at the budget, see if we have the money within before we ask, you know, money beyond. I know we do have health grants. Once I have a better idea, I'll present some options so that we can make an informed decision. But it was very time-well spent, and my heartfelt thanks to everybody who helped us out.
Jessica, relax.
I just wanted to do a quick follow-up on the, two weeks ago, when we had the presentation with Five Star, I did follow up with Superintendent Lyons, and they cross-checked that everybody's bus numbers were updated on Aspen. And then she helped kind of follow up with Five Star. And we got word tonight that the updated route maps were provided tonight. So once they get converted into the proper format, they can get updated on our webpage. So they did follow through on making sure that we have the updated routes and hopefully times are more accurate and things like that. So we shall get those posted, and obviously, if anybody has any feedback after they get posted, to please continue to report them to your building principals, and they'll help filter the information through so that we can get any additional corrections made. The other thing, I just wanted to do a quick plug. Behind that curtain, there's a set that's almost done that the students have been working on building for the first production of the Fine Arts Department for this school year. So the high school is doing Mean Girls, the high school version, November 17th, 18th, and 19th. If there are any parents out there who are interested in volunteering, that post went up on the Parents of MHS Facebook page today. So we can get some parents to help with the things that there are not enough students to go around to do. So please come see the show.
Thank you. Any other school community members have anything?
I just have one piece, Mr. Prowl, you had brought up at the last meeting about the signs for athletics.
Yep.
I did have a conversation this week with Hutch, and he's going to get back to me to look at numbers and make sure that there's nothing that we need to do to make those the case. I told him about the two at the entrances, and he was working on that for me.
I heard from Ryan Sylvia and Tony Cipio also about the signs. Got a lot of good people working on it.
Yep.
Well, and if you wouldn't mind, I had a meeting today with Jim and also Sean Sisliano to talk about how we might approach this in a way that would recognize all of our championship teams. We were talking about where, along the driveway, kind of that, that grassy area between 28, and how we would like kind of space that signage in order to recognize all of our championship teams through time. So as you get closer to the building, you'll see our most recent, but it would be a nice moment to celebrate. We have, we have many champion seasons through our rich history here in Middleborough, so it would be nice to honor all. So more to come on that. We were talking about it today. I was going to bring a schematic, but until I have the signs, I'll, I'll wait on that. But we're, we're well on it and moving forward.
Colin, you are next, my friend. Welcome.
Thank you. It's good seeing everybody. I'm here to give a report on all the schools again. Over at the MEK, they celebrated Halloween with a Halloween parade on Tuesday, which wrapped around the school through downtown Middleborough and had families cheering them on when they're all in costumes. Also, the curriculum and some of the lessons still involve pumpkins, apples, and scarecrows to fit in the fall season, as well as the PTA has a meeting tonight, had a meeting tonight, and their parent-teacher conferences next Monday and Wednesday, the 6th and the 8th. At the H&amp;B, also due to Halloween, they had the Big Blast on Friday 27th, and a huge turnout with students and families. I also know from personal experience, this is a huge event for all the parent volunteers to put on. So Mr. Thompson wanted to give a thank you to everybody who helped and gave their time. As well as, the school was super excited, as everybody here knows, to present their new recess equipment, which they put together on the Professional Development Day. And all the students got to use today recess, even though it was a little cold, but still got to use it. Also, grades first through three, first through third participated in an anti-bullying assembly today put on by the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And grades fourth and fifth will be attending assemblies the next few weeks. Also, school pitcher retakes are tomorrow. Over at MKG, first-grade students and families also attended an annual costume parade put on by the school to celebrate their Halloween. Next week, fifth-grade students will be visiting the Museum of Natural History in Boston on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, depending on the class your student is in. At the middle school, they're having a classic book fair tomorrow, as well as next Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The school is looking for volunteers for this. There was a post put out on the parent helping page, but I'm sure if you reach out to the schools, they will point in the right direction. Also, winter sports signups have started for the 23-24 season. Also, they have a PTA meeting on Tuesday, the 14th. At the high school, last Friday, 40 members of Student Council, including myself, attended Walpole High School for the Fall CMAS Conference, and we represent the school with leadership and a lot of spirits. A great thank you goes out to all the seniors on all the fall sports teams that their seasons have ended. But we hope to cheer on all the other teams venturing into their tournaments. As well as the high school first quarter is ending tomorrow, with the new quarter starting on Monday, the 6th. As well as mentioned, the play is going to be put on, or the musical, Mean Girls, the 17th, 18th, and 19th of November. As well as, there is a Friday night game here at stadium. It is the first-round playoff game for the football team. It is against Marblehead 7, and you must buy the tickets online to get tickets in. And with all that all being said, we have next Friday off due to Veterans Day, but I would like to give a thanks to all the veterans that served our country and fought for our freedom. Next Friday is not just a day off school, it is a day to give thanks and appreciate all that they've done for our country. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you.
Of course. Any questions for Colin? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn over the superintendent's report.
Okay, so this evening, I have two quick updates before we turn into MCAS. I will call Dr. Terry Markalitis up to the table to get set up and queue that up. I just wanted to extend a thank you to Oak Point. Oak Point every fall runs a yard sale, which happened on October 7th, so I'm late with this thank you, unfortunately, this year. But between the sale and raffles, the yard sale itself and the raffles, Oak Point raised over $50,000 that they provide in scholarships to students who live in Middleborough and graduate high school. So that includes students from Middleborough High School and also BP Tech. It's an extremely generous donation. I'm actually meeting with the board tomorrow morning to thank them in person. Like Coastal, I'd like to invite them here. I think it's nice to honor how much work goes into that yard sale. I go every year with my family. My kids love shopping at the yard sale. And I'm struck by how many hands go into that effort. We have high schoolers who come from Middleborough High School and donate their time as part of their community service hours. But the, between the bake sale and the raffles, it's really, it's quite an event. And it's, it's a very generous donation to this community, so more to come on that. And then I just wanted to briefly update you on financial services, that TMS was awarded the bid. The company that I had discussed previously on the 23rd, they were the only ones who submitted a bid. a bid. Their plan involves two staff, Brian Hyde and Trish Boyer, who I met with yesterday. They began their work on November 1st. I actually left PD in the middle of the morning to meet with them and then head back to PD. They, I was onboarding them with the assistance of tech, making sure they were acclimated. They are getting right to work on our end of year report and the budget process, which the leadership team has advanced that calendar and I thank them for that work. And I'm also happy to share that these services actually represent a cost savings to the district. For starters, there's no benefits paid through, through this process, so the district will not have to cover that cost. And the way the bid breaks down is a monthly expenditure, which is, actually represents a, you know, modest savings on the previous contract that we had in place. So all in all, so far, I'm extremely encouraged. It's been exactly one day, but I will certainly keep you updated as, as we proceed. They are taking on, you know, tasks that are time sensitive, which will also include assistance with our bid process on facilities projects that will be happening this year. So with that, hopefully Dr. Markalitis is set up. I will welcome her this evening to talk to us about data presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. Good evenings, Superintendent Lyons, Chairman Young and School Committee. It's nice to be here. I, a couple of weeks ago, actually it's almost a month now, sent you a much longer presentation than what I am going to be sharing tonight. I hope that you have had some time to look at it and review it. I am going to give you a very abridged version in the interest of time, but if you do have questions at the end, please feel free to ask. Okay, so I want to start with just an overview, what the data tells us, what the data does not tell us, and what our focus points are for the next five years. We want to really hone in on that five years. This is not something we're going to move overnight. Moving data, having, seeing some significant progress takes some time. So I just want to put that out there. So as educators, we look at data all the time. We look at it in our classroom, we look at it in our buildings, we look at it in our district. And we look at data to really identify student need, to make sure that we are responsive to the students in our classrooms and in our district. I'm going to give you a quick overview tonight of some of our data points, specifically MCAS and access testing. I'm going to give you a little bit more information when I get to those two different things, but I want to talk to you about what MCAS tells us. So data from MCAS tells us how students perform on their grade level standards. So Massachusetts has the Massachusetts Frameworks for ELA, math, social sciences and science. We also have them for physical education, world language, performing arts, that we have standards for just about everything, which is a great thing because we want to know where our students need to go. And our mass frameworks really do provide a roadmap for that. MCAS also determines student growth over the years and it looks at their ability to meet grade level standards, compares them to other students in the state, other students at their grade level and at their performance level. Access testing gives us information about our English language learners. They are required to take this test and I'm going to talk to you a little bit more about, more about that when I get there. It really focuses on their language acquisition, which is the information that we need to know. So what the data does not tell us, it does not tell us the specific skills that students may need assistance in. For that, we have screeners like Early Bird and STAR 360, both things which we have talked about here before. Early Bird is our dyslexia screener. STAR 360, we use in grade one through grade eight for ELA and math, and that is really more of a screener to see where kids need support in the immediate skills that they are maybe not able to quite access, which prevents them from achieving success in their grade level standards. All right. DESI Communications. So this press release, I'm just going to boil it down. We met with the, gosh, what's his name for the DESI, the head of DESI? Why am I forgetting his name? Commissioner?
Joe Riley.
Thank you. We met with him a while ago and he presented a whole lot of information, but basically what he said was that the state of Massachusetts, we are closing the gaps that were created by the pandemic. There's also a return of accountability ratings. I don't know if you remember that from a few years ago. They did away with them during COVID, but they are bringing them back and they are back this year. Fortunately for us, we are not meeting, we are not in the place where we need to have the state step in, so our accountability ratings were fine. They also mentioned that 83% of schools were identified as not requiring assistance or intervention. Middleborough falls in that category. 62% of schools met, exceeded or made substantial progress towards their accountability targets. Targets are different for every district, depending on your demographics, demographics and your student makeup. So our data from this year and from the last few years shows us that while we have started to close the pandemic gaps, we still have work to do. We have three focus areas and these are focus areas that I identified in my entry plan when I started here. These areas have not changed. We are continuing to work on them, but we still have, we still have a ways to go. Those three focus areas are standards-based instruction. That means making sure that at every grade, our students are exposed to their grade level standard. We want our teachers to go even deeper so that our students can, if not be mastering grade level, grade level standards, at least proficient in grade level standards. The second area that we are focusing on is common assessments and these common assessments are tied to our grade level standards. Common assessments are really important so that we can determine that we are doing what we need to do across grade levels and then both horizontal and vertically to make sure our students are where they need to be. When we do not have common assessments, we don't know what's happening classroom to classroom and it's really hard to identify problems without them. The third area of focus is writing. This continues to be a concern. We are increasing writing in every content area at every grade level at every opportunity. Communication from DESI and from the district that will be coming out in the very near future, if you have not already received it. MCAS scores will be mailed home to you. MCAS alt portfolios, access scores and district report cards will be sent when DESI releases those reports. They have not yet. So as soon as they do, they, you, families will get them. Okay, so data discussion points. I'm going to be talking to you about access testing, alternate portfolios, I'm speaking quicker than my brain's working, and MCAS. As I mentioned earlier, access testing is required by law for our English learner students. It's a way for us to assess them annually to make sure that they are making progress in learning English. EL students are required to participate in access and these tests are administered in January and February. In our district, I just have a couple of data points that I want to share with you. In 2021, we had 47 English language learner students. In 2022, we had 54. In 2023, we had 77. And in 2024, we will have 120 English language learners in our district. That is 3.7% of our students. So these scores matter. We really need to know if our English language program is successful and this is one of the indicators for us to look at to determine that. We do not have scores from the MEK or from Nichols because we had less than 10 students. When you have less than 10 students, DESI does not report on the scores. So there are several categories on here and it really looks at students' ability to master reading, writing, speaking and listening in English. The proficiency levels are entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging and reaching. At HBV, our students, let me rephrase that, 75% of our students made progress. That is how access reports it. It just says they made progress. That is remarkable. At MKG, we had 45% of our ELs making progress and at the high school, we had 27% of our students making progress. MCAS alt portfolios. This is a portfolio-style assessment, very different from the test that students sit for two hours and take two to four hours. This includes work samples, instructional data, videos. It really looks at a different way to show that students understand their standards. Students participate in the MCAS alt the same years that their peers do, grades three to 10 in ELA, math and science. And students who take the MCAS alt make up 1% of students with disabilities, both in Middleborough and in the state. 2022, 23, we had 15 alts. We will have the same this year for submission. Our scores from 23, 13 alts passed in fall, one alt partially passed, passed for math and science, but did not pass for ELA. And we had one that did not pass due to the student being unavailable to complete the In your packet that you received earlier, I gave you the state and district comparison. I did not put this here. I really just wanted us to focus on our school in this shorter version. So when you look at the MCAS scores, this is English that is up here, ELA. There are four categories of proficiency. Blue is exceeding expectations. Green is meeting expectations. Orange is partially meeting and red is not meeting. We have three years of comparative data at this point. Please remember that 21 was when we were just coming back from the pandemic. 22 was the first year that students were fully back in and 23 is this last year and we are still working to close those gaps. As I mentioned earlier, we are getting there and by next year, we will have closed those gaps. If you look at our achievement in ELA for grade three, we have about 35% of our students meeting or exceeding and about 65% partially meeting or not meeting. That partially meeting category, I just want to be clear on this, there's a lot of students who are on the cusp. That is, it's a data word, but it really means that with a point or two, they would have been in the meeting category. So that's something that we focus on when we look at the data. We really look at those kids who were on the cusp. What did they miss? Was it something that was faulty with our curriculum? Was it something that we didn't teach until later on in the year and the kids may not have exposure to it before MCAS? There's a lot of different things that we look at. We also look at what was taught in grade two? Did we hit those standards in grade two fully? And if not, how do we do that next year so it doesn't impact grade three at testing? Grade four and grade five in ELA look very similar. And then moving on to the middle school, starting in grade six, you will see that 30% of our students were meeting or exceeding, 70% were either partially meeting or not meeting. Sixth grade is a tough year. It is when our kids transition into middle school. The test becomes a little bit more challenging and we just need to make sure that we are preparing our students for the rigor of not only the test, but of the standards. So there's a lot of buzz about MCAS and how they used to have students that called it torture. They didn't love it. It's not fun. The kids don't love it, but what it does do is gives us a lot of information about our curriculum and about whether or not we are teaching what we need to teach, when we need to teach it. Grade seven, 40% meeting or exceeding and grade eight, we had 37% meeting or exceeding. Grade 10, which is the year that is really important for our students, MCAS is a graduation requirement. 54% of our students were meeting or exceeding and I did speak with Superintendent Lyons about this earlier on and all of our students did graduate. Nobody missed graduation due to MCAS. So looking at math, we see some very similar statistics. In grade three, 39% of our students were meeting or exceeding. In grade four, 30% meeting or exceeding. Grade five, 44% and grade six, 36%. Seven and eight were both at 39% meeting or exceeding and grade 10 was 44%. Take us through science. Grade five, science is only tested in grades five, eight and 10, so it's a cumulative test for the grades that come before. 41% meeting or exceeding in grade five, 47 in grade eight and in grade 10, we had 48% of our students meeting or exceeding. So what the data tells us, we need to focus on grade level standards-based instruction in tier one across the four major content areas. Achievement versus growth. Growth is incredibly important and we want all of our students to grow every year, but we also need to look at achievement because if our students are growing, but they are never achieving grade level standards, we are never going to catch them up. So we need to make sure that we are doing both of those things, looking at their growth and looking at their achievement. As I mentioned earlier, we are increasing the frequency and type of writing across all content areas at all grade levels. We are providing tiered instruction to meet the needs of all students. Many of you may have heard of MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support. In education, we look at it through three tiers. Tier one, which is where most of our students sit. Tier two, which is some of our students who may need a little bit more, a little bit more intervention. Tier three is really our special education population who may need something different. And those are the three tiers. It works the same for social, emotional. Tier one is really everybody. Tier two is those who need something a little bit different and tier three is, you know, significantly different. We are closing the pandemic gaps and as I mentioned, graduation is not impacted by So rather than sit where we are, I want to tell you where we're going, how the district is responding to this data. So we looked at a lot of our data as we were developing our district strategy for continued improvement and it informed a lot of that work. School improvement plans, two of which you will hear tonight and three of which you will hear will hear next, next school committee meeting, also used a lot of our data to inform the plans. We started vertical articulation teams this year. And at those teams, we are looking at our curriculum, really determining if, in grade one, we are fully addressing the standards that we need to at grade one, so that when students enter grade two, they are ready to go. The same for every grade. We have representatives from K through 12 on this team, all working together and collaborating to make sure that we are giving our students the very best education that we can. Curriculum writing and planning is something that is ongoing. It never stops. We are doing a lot of it right now. We did a lot of it over the summer, as I mentioned earlier. And that work continues. We brought on Ufly for foundational literacy. I've had a lot of questions about our literacy curriculum. We know that we have had some weakness in our foundational literacy. This year, to address and really attack that weakness, we brought on Ufly. So far, we are hearing from our teachers that it is really an excellent product. So I am really thrilled to be able to report that. The other thing that we're doing is increased frequency of writing, focusing on standards-based instruction instead of products. So we have a lot of resources in this district. Those resources are not our curriculum. Our curriculum are the frameworks, and we need to make sure that we're teaching those standards. MTSS, which I mentioned, we brought on Panorama, which allows us to look at multiple data points at one time. We are trying to hire an additional ELL teacher. If we know anybody out there who's interested, please apply. We are looking at restorative discipline and interventions for that. We've added mental health supports and resources. We are looking at our professional development needs. We've also added additional devices, including ELL access devices, touchscreen panels, Chromebooks, and iPads. That's the district. How the schools are responding to the data. MECC, Ufly, targeted interventions, professional development, really great coaching, vertical and horizontal alignment of standards, and a focus on belonging for students and families. At HBB, they're trying to solidify multi-tiered systems of support in the areas of academics and behavior. They are progress monitoring students and the interventions those students are getting, developing and implementing consistent grade-level curriculum, and supporting teacher growth through PD and coaching. At MKG, implementation of universally-designed instructional practices, MTSS to support the engagement of all students, developing and implementing consistent grade-level curriculum, and supporting educators through PD and coaching. At Nichols, who you will hear from, you'll hear from Nichols tonight, they're working to improve student achievement through MTSS. They're analyzing data to make informed decisions, to look at curriculum and assessment. They're also improving school culture by focusing on student activities, arts, and athletics. And finally, at the high school, improved instructional practices, implementing curriculum changes developed by the Curriculum Institute and educators. They're using data to drive their instruction decisions. They are trying to embed relevance in all content areas to increase, increase student engagement. They're creating a comprehensive advisory program. They're doing peer observations, which is teacher-to-teacher, not student-to-student, and focusing on vertical and horizontal articulation. And that is a very quick overview of the data. Questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Jessica, go ahead.
So you mentioned that one of the things that MCAS tells us is how we, as a district, are doing teaching our curriculum and if our curriculum is meeting the standards.
Yeah.
I would wonder if you can just mention briefly, how are the MCAS presented to the students? Since the goal of it is to see how the curriculum stands up, how well we're doing teaching the curriculum, how is it presented to the students so that they don't conceive of it as torture?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. This is something that I think we need to work on as a community. I think if we are teaching the standards the way that we should, kids should never worry about taking this test. It should be just another day, coming to school, knowing that you're going to get this, and you don't need to worry about it. Now, we are not there. I think that this is something we all need to work on. There's a lot of talk about MCAS going away. MCAS is probably not going away. It is the only statewide assessment that we have to really see about our effectiveness as a district, and it's important. I think the message for students has to be that it really is not testing them as much as it's testing us, looking at, are we teaching you what you need? Are we really giving you the rigor that you need, the engagement that you need, the foundational skills that you need, so that you can walk in on any day and feel successful? Never mind an MCAS day. That's something that we need to do, and we need to, as a community, do it. So parents and guardians have to have a part in this, too. I think if we make it scary, it becomes scary. And so I would like to do our best to avoid that and really have some better language around that.
Yeah, I definitely support that because I do think that making sure the students are clear on what it is testing is important to help kind of take some of the pressure off, but to also help them understand their part in representing the district based on what they know without the pressure coming along with it.
Hi, Gray.
Yep. Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to offer that, you know, I've, I've spoken with all five principals, even though there's not MCAS testing at MECC. And what I would offer is that each building approaches the MCAS through a developmentally appropriate lens. Our students begin taking this test at grade three, and they take it consistently through grade, through grade 10 and as needed. What I'll tell you is the way it's approached at the elementary schools does look very different. We do not want our students, we really don't want our students at any level believing that their entire portfolio, that their entire value, or that their performance can be wrapped up in any one single test. I always tip my hat to our students who have approached this, particularly coming out of the last few years with a degree of resiliency. The testing schedules are set by the state. And, you know, the way we engage with students fluctuates at each level. And certainly, when we get to the high school, we understand the stakes. It is presented differently. But I would like to say that all of the principals go out of their way to talk about this in a way to deliberately reduce anxiety and stress. We all realize, you know, the impact it has on our students. We also, as a district, spend a lot of time talking about the many ways a student can showcase their abilities that extend far beyond just this test. Yes, it is a measure of the standards. It is not the only measure of our students. So we reiterate that with them, and I hope that that's a message that gets reiterated to them at home as well.
I do think that involving the community, I mean, I remember before MCAS getting, you know, the bulletin saying, make sure your kid has a good breakfast and gets a solid night's sleep. And that just puts this level of stress and pressure on it. So that might be a nice message to kind of package as, you know, hey, don't forget that this is something that you just get to do, and then it's done, and
Yeah.
and all of that. So I appreciate the, the build with the different grade levels. But anything we can do to make it less about individual student performance and more about the standards, I think, is beneficial.
Yeah, it's, it's called high-stakes testing, and it shouldn't be.
Can you talk a little bit about as we start the budget season? How we make sure that the money we spend sort of meets the issues that we encounter on MCAS? And also, in my mind, because of the way MCAS plays out when we get the results, we're not constantly following, following, falling behind a year. Because, you know, you go through the budget process, you're addressing this year's, last year's MCAS results. And by the time you get this year's MCAS results, you're in the middle of school year to begin with. I mean, I think we can change some pieces, like professional development, because although those dates are set, but they're not necessarily planned out.
Yeah.
Or they can't be adapted. But I'm just wondering how you utilize what you're seeing in a financial way in looking at what we've paid for.
Sure. So I'm going to just give you an example. We recognized that we had a foundational literacy program, problem. And it was, you know, something that we needed to address. We looked at several programs. We looked at what was best for the district, both financially and ease of implementation, those two things. We really looked at that it needed to happen immediately. And we onboarded Ufly this year. We did professional development. This was something that, you know, we looked at, I looked at years of data. And what was the common thread? When you see grammar issues over and over again, the, the building blocks for grammar is foundational literacy, right? And so when you see that that is a piece that we are weak in, we have to address foundational literacy. We did it. We took the money that was allotted, and we spent half of it on a program that thus far is meeting our needs and exceeding our expectations. That's just one example. We are currently doing a social sciences curriculum review this year. We don't just use MCAS. We also do a comprehensive review of our programming, which requires us to survey families, students, teachers, to review artifacts, which is student work, assessments that are given, the textbooks or digital texts that we're using, other resources. We look at everything. And then we make really comprehensive decisions about what we're going to purchase. Is it going to sustain us for a few years so that we don't have to buy it again? History is a tough one because it changes so fast. So if you buy a textbook for grade eight that costs, you know, $100,000, you might have to do that again in two years. Is that how we want to spend our money? So we're looking at all of these things. MCAS, as you said, it's just one piece, and it comes often after the fact. So we just have to look at the trends in MCAS that we are seeing over years, not necessarily one year. And the pandemic has skewed quite a bit of what we look at because that was something that, you know, was unprecedented. I can't believe I just used that word in that context. I apologize. We've all heard that word a million times. But that is really how we go about it.
The other question I have relates to the 10th grade. As you said, none of our 12th graders last year were excluded from graduation because they failed MCAS. But we know there's a number of 10th graders who go on that process. And I think over the past five or six years, we haven't had a student not graduate. One of the questions I have is, I know we have a lot of the backup plan to help them in junior and senior year be able to retake the test and get
Yeah.
Do we ever survey those kids to ask them what worked for them personally, as opposed to just making an assumption that what we're doing makes sense, which I think it is because of what's, the end result is those kids graduating? But to me, that's a, that's a piece that we could actually have conversation with those students about what was the difference in those two years? And maybe look at how to do those things earlier as opposed to waiting for, after 10th grade?
We do now. Mr. Brannigan, did you hear that? Okay. I think that's a really good idea. And it might be different for every child as well. That's something we would need to look at because what works for one student, we often find, does not work for another. And that where, that's where we come in as educators, really kind of pinpointing what we do need to do for our individual students. But I think surveying them to see what worked, and actually even more importantly, what wasn't working, might give us some valuable information.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just wanted to address the budget question that you asked because something that the budget subcommittee prioritized last year was spending in curriculum, which has not always been an area that we have allocated, you know, there was a pretty significant financial focus on curriculum. And you cannot address problems that will appear on MCAS results that are indicative of curriculum problems without spending money on curriculum. So that's the first thing I wanted to say is that continued curriculum spending is something that you can anticipate in, in the budget that, that I will propose. But I also firmly believe that you do need, you do need to allocate a percentage of your budget to that. The other thing I'll say is that you asked the question about being behind the cycle because it's true. Every year, the results come out now, which is last year's data. So that's, that's frustrating because what you really want to know is what we're doing right now, is it effective? Is it working? And I have, you know, another piece of information you have to understand. It doesn't always reflect immediately. To know, for example, in looking at Ufly, to know if that, if addressing that foundational literacy is effective, that may not appear in next year's scores. It may be in two years' scores. It really depends on exactly what's been targeted, who's been tested, and how long they've had the intervention. So it's just something I wanted to throw out there. I definitely think from a budgetary standpoint, you can expect that focus. But more importantly, that's, there's no way to clear up the mismatch of cycle and being reminded that, you know, these, these shifts often do take time, which is one of the reasons strategic plans are done for multi-years, because we recognize that expecting that level of change in a short period of time is not impossible, but not necessarily something that can be expected, so.
Yeah, whenever you bring on a new curriculum program in testing, you see a bump, like a quick fix, but then you see it level. So that quick fix isn't something I want. I want us to have a steady upward trajectory, and that's going to take some time, probably three to five years.
Thank you. Other question?
Yeah, just quickly, I'm actually curious about the increased frequency of the writing.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Can you give an idea of what that looks like specifically at the middle school, grades six through eight? Because my concern is that personally, I've heard when kids get to ninth grade in their, in their English class, they don't even know how to start, put together, or write an essay. So it's, to me, that seems like that's something foundational that should be built up all through the middle school years. And I don't know if there's pieces missing and if that's being now put into the curriculum at middle school.
Sure. So a couple of the things that we are doing, it doesn't start in middle school. It starts much earlier than that. And it, it really does start in our pre-K, K classrooms. And it looks very different there. They draw a picture, and they either talk about it, or they do their inventive spelling and write a little story with it. For second, third, it gets a little bit more complex with the more language they have. Fourth, fifth, and then sixth, seventh, and eighth is when they start writing essays. They start writing opinion papers. They start writing narratives. And they start writing informational pieces. We have focused a lot on reading. And writing is the accompaniment of that, kind of like multiplication and division. You have to write all the time to get better at it. I believe that our middle school does a very good job of teaching. What I don't know that we do is teach it enough so that kids hold on to it, so that when they get to the high school, they're ready to go. That's what we're looking at with our vertical articulation teams. We really are looking at how are we teaching it? Are we teaching it enough and in, and often enough so that kids really own it? We can't just do one essay a year and expect them to retain that skill and develop that skill. If you're a writer, you know that you write all the time. And you scrap it, and you start over, and you do it again. It's a long process. Writing is a process. It's not something that just comes out. There's a lot that goes into it. And I think that we all agree, all of us, that we have to do more, and we are. Yep.
Other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Markelaitis. Thank you. So with that, I'll turn to our next item, which is the Middleborough High School School Improvement Plan. And I'll call up Principal Paul Brannigan to walk us through a review of this year's school improvement. I believe you also received this in the Dropbox and so had this to review.
Hey everyone. Good evening. I just want to say that I can't thank Dr. Markelaitis enough and Mrs. Lyons because those very vertical articulation teams have become a game changer. I will tell you that for being the end stop for students at this building, oftentimes you're making assumption of what you think they may have known or what they've learned. And now that you have a team of educators from all different grade levels sitting at a table together, talking about exactly what's happening in each and every grade, that the, the conversation is becoming very different. And I just think those, in the long term, you will see that that is going to pay off in dividends. And I just can't thank Dr. Michael, Dr. Michaelaitis enough for, for really that vision of that as well. So I just, that was important to note that. I'm really excited to share with you our plan and that a lot of what you heard in terms of the last presentation is really going to kind of echo in terms of what the high school is doing. We really have pared down our plan historically. I've come to you with easily about 10 different goals for the high school. And I think it's because at a building like this, there's just an awful lot of stuff that you need to do. But I think that our school council really pared down to say, what is really the most important things that we need to do? But also how we can layer our improvement plan as well. You see the members of our school council this year, just a tremendous team of parents and teachers and students. And I'm really just quite grateful for all the work that they've done this year. And, and many of them are continuing with us this year. You see five goals and I want to take you through each one of them, but you're going to notice our number one goal, which I find to be the most critical, is the instructional practices. A focus on school culture, which we know the fact that the more students feel like they are connected to school is unbelievable research that shows the more the students feel connected, the better they will understand school and the better they will actually do in school. So when you're looking at really even in, in Dr. Michaelaitis's presentation of really what the schools are doing, looking at culture is a direct correlation between the two. Looking at our really exciting future-ready program, our vision of the graduate, and then of course, the new schedule at the high school. Really want to start with the instructional practices. First and foremost, that the curriculum updates and implementation, as I had shared with you about the vertical articulation teams, the summer work that has been done has had significant impact on the high school. And so really working with the department chairs in all content areas, really what are we, what are now the new steps working into the curriculum and really how do we implement that? And that is an ongoing body of work. As it was mentioned, the history department is beginning their curriculum renewal process. The math department is in the middle of theirs. The world language department has started a brand new curriculum this year as well. So there is some really, some really cool things happening in terms of that implementation. And then it's really us, the monitoring of that as well. Rigor and relevance. I've always believed that this high school is filled with rigor and that no matter what classroom you go into, that it's a rigorous experience. However, we also know the fact that in students, especially now, is that if they do not find the relevance in what it is that they're learning and why they're sitting there under, learning what they're learning, they're never going to make the connection. And we also know the fact that the more relevant that the learning is for them, the more engagement they will have in the classroom, which will then in turn may have achievement go up, which in terms will identify students to find that personal success. It all correlates to each other. And so for this year, it is really a charge of all of our content areas is to do a deep dive and be looking at really is all the things that we're doing truly relevant? You may be thinking to yourself, well, a geometry class, how does that relevant or how can it be relevant? They have to have that course to graduate. Well, really it's looking at really how are we delivering what we're delivering? Or in then, in, in that English class, so that science class, no matter where it is. If it's a graduation requirement, how do we ensure the fact that the activities and the lessons that we're doing have connection for our students? They can see themselves in the lesson, number one. And number two, the fact that they're making connections that are transferable, no matter what class they go into. Our advanced placement program, really looking at that as a review. It's interesting. I've come before this committee talking about really the leveling practices. So the student could enter in ninth grade and be able to really take the steps into honors and the steps into advanced placement. And I deeply believe that they can do that. However, what we're finding is the fact that this seems to be a bigger step that needs to happen for advanced placement and that is not sitting well. And so now we're going back really looking at really what does advanced placement look like, smell like? At the same exact time, how will we get in our students be prepared in the pre-AP experience to ensure that when they take that academic risk to say, I really want to go into an advanced placement class, no matter what content it is? The fact that our students are ready for that. Assessment practices and personalized learning. I deeply believe that the more the students are connected to what they are that they're learning, the more personalized it becomes for them. And that in terms of our assessment practices across the board, it's looking at really what are common assessments? What are the students doing? What are the skills we're pulling out of that? And ultimately, how do we personalize that experience? Again, it all correlates in with this idea of what we're, what we're using for instruction, how it relates to assessment and how it relates to common practice for students. Professional learning communities with our new schedule, we're launching for the first time ever here, the ability for constant time for teachers to be meeting, which is called common planning time. And we're getting the feet wet with this one, but we're really excited with what we're seeing in terms of what's happening in the content areas to allow a constant conversation to be had about really what it is that we're seeing in our students and effective practices as well. This is a big one for me, the technology and finding balance. I'm a big believer in the fact that there needs to be this balance between the use of technology in the classroom, i.e. the devices that every student has in really ensuring the fact that the strategies that we're using in the classroom complement that. And so really what working with our teachers is really, we had swung the peddlums so far in a direction in regards of utilizing the technology in the computers, is how do we now get back into this equilibrium a little bit? That it's not just about everything loaded into a Google Classroom. It's really about making active learning experiences come to life. Data-informed decisions, just tomorrow, I'm pulling all of the main content areas with the help of Dr. Markelaitis and the STEM coordinator and the humanities coordinator to do a dive into really what our data is telling us. But furthermore than that, we're going back to something we did in 2014, which is we created an accountability plan for our school. It was a one-year plan that really looked at the very focused areas that we need to do in order to improve. Cross-curricular work, we had the topic going with, or the, the pilot with our topics of humanities course. And now we're going to be looking at all the other areas as well. And of course, our continued work with project-based learning, especially as this high school is based upon a project-based learning model. The next one is really school culture. It's built on a true sense of community and belonging and a plan on the big A's, activities, arts and athletics. The freshman academy, this is a big one for us of looking at ninth grade. And it's something that I've always had a big belief and our school council believes it as well. Is the fact that the ninth grade experience is by far the most vital for a student to meet with success and graduate on time. The data is overwhelming for that. Our freshman academy is now, we've decided to build the freshman academy as we're working with our ninth graders. With last year's ninth graders, the class of 2026, we built a program thinking we knew what we knew based upon the class of 2025. We realized the fact that the class of 26 had very different kind of norms and very different engagement. And we realized that what we had built for the class of 25 was not really applicable to the class of 26. So we decided to really be working with all of our ninth grade teachers and identify actually what are the entry points we need to be creating in the immediate and how does it become common practice in all of our classrooms? The school counseling department, an unbelievable thing getting our fourth school counselor, having four school counselors now in the department has been a game changer in regards to really how we engage our students with the counselors as well. And again, creating the system here at the high school where we have a counseling team and we don't have our adjustment councils on one side of the building and our school councils on another. It now becomes a team and it's been a really unbelievable experience watching that dynamic cultivate itself. The advisory program, we have 18 sessions this year. It's all about a sense of belonging through two lenses. Through our MyCap program, which I'll explain to you in another slide, and also our vision of the graduate. Bringing those two together of talking about what we want for our students, how do they see themselves in their sense of academic excellence? But then on top of that, how do they see themselves upon their graduation date? Again, ultimately, this whole concept of belonging. The three A's and it's all about engagement, athletics, activities and the arts. How do you get kids to become a part of our school and to be, become the feeling of connected? We know if a student becomes involved in one thing, their, their, their capacity for success comes, increases exponentially. The Start Strong program is always something we're looking at as well, especially our school council felt. We need to take a lot of looking at our transition from middle school to high school. Student engagement, our peer-to-peer engagement. In our NEAS data that came back, and eventually I'll come back to before you to talk about NEAS. Our peer-to-sta, peer-to-staff ratio was unbelievably high. In terms of engagement from peer to peer, we have a lot of work to do of how students treat each other, how they engage with each other. And that has become a focus here for the year. Data-formed initiative making, using panorama, the sense of belonging, where are our areas of need? And then how do we respond as a school? Wellness strong, we're bringing back the wellness weeks. We have our first one starting at the end of January. We thought it was important to come back right after the holiday break as we get ready for the midpoint. And also our tiered invention intervention systems, strategies in classrooms. Even something as simple as a teacher standing at the door every day at the beginning of the period, welcoming kids into class or standing at the door as kids are leaving, telling them they'll see tomorrow. That is incredibly powerful impact on a student. And ultimately, really the redefining and really revitalizing of the Fire Arts program. We know the fact that it had taken a hit up here over the last couple of years. We see it growing and growing in the lower grades. We need to be prepared for that. It makes sure that we can cultivate that as they're leaving elementary school right up here to the high school. Our future-ready program. When I mentioned to you a little bit about relevance, this is really where it comes down to. And we're really quite excited by this program. We are making a commitment of the three Es. And that means that every graduate who leaves this high school will either be enrolled, enlisted or employed. And it really becomes, how do we create this trajectory for students that every student has a plan when they walk out of this building? And the implementation of that is through our MyCap, which is the My College and Academic Plan, or Career Academic Plan, excuse me. And that every student in grades nine through 12 will engage in this protocol that we've been trained in for the last two years, getting ready for this experience this year. And the whole concept is really creating future-ready experiences. Innovation pathways, as you know, Middleborough High School was named an innovative pathway school with our manufacturing pathway. Now we're beginning to do an assessment, where are the entry points for others? So that in the 24, 25 school year or 25, 26 school year, we can begin to apply for new innovative pathways. The senior internship program, how do we ensure that all of our students are engaging in future-ready experiences? What does that sound like? What do we do in the classroom to enhance what it means to be future-ready? What are those particular skills and how does employ when they leave us upon graduation? Between the work of Tony Cupy and Kevin Avatably, Josh Porter, Lacy Foley, really this unbelievable workforce preparation and partnership with so many of the businesses here in town in creating those partnerships as well. We know we had members of this committee here with us in June last year for our very first community partnership. And lastly, the program of studies, we just had a meeting today in regards to program of studies. And that we, that one of the departments, our Fine Arts Department, did an unbelievable protocol where they looked at every single course that they're teaching in the program of studies and they had to write a narrative that made it future-ready. What is the relevant skills that they're doing in that class? That's going to allow for the description to be made that it becomes relevant for students. Our vision of the graduate, this is something we're rolling out. We're really quite proud of this. And this has been two years in the making and our school council felt it was important to ensure the fact that this was one of our goals. It's really completing draft one of the vision of the graduate, this whole concept of paint in your future, which is where you see the color wheel that is there. The implementation and engagement, this is the beginnings. We've done two advisories with our students of really having them understand what are these skills? You may be thinking, where are these skills coming from? So back in 2020, we actually did surveys and collected over, well over 500 responses from all stakeholders, from families, from faculty, from students, from alumni, of really what are the skills that they felt were so important to, for our graduates? And over the last two years, it has been cultivated into these, into these six standards that are there, these pillars as we call them. This is a very much in the beginning stages, but we're really excited about really where we are with it. The collaborative consult, you notice the dates, November 13th and 14th, we began our NEAS accreditation. It's all embedded around this vision of the graduate, which I'm so thankful for Mrs. Lyons for really the work of really having the entire school district really use this vision of the graduate because the vision just doesn't start in grade nine. It starts when the student enters the system in kindergarten. Creating performance benchmarks over the course of the year, we'll be looking at really how does this vision of the graduate become? How do we do use it? What do we do with it? And lastly, the recreating of the mission and vision for MHS. So really quite excited by that. And I'll be coming back to you further with the collaborative consult in NEAS as well. And just lastly, the new high school schedule, we felt it was important to keep this on the, on our goals to make sure that it's implemented and really what we need to be doing with it. Obviously, you know, we have a brand new schedule at the high school. We're engaging students consistently every month and we're preparing now to send something out to families as well. The student engagement piece, and we'll come back to you at a later time to look at the data points that we're seeing from students. We did the same survey in September. We did another one on Friday of last week. And to be able to see the trends that we're seeing in terms of aspects and elements of the schedule. The community partnerships, the success block, which is slowly beginning now as we've begun the foundational work of our success block. Looking at academic expectations, grading policies, all of that is being done over the course of this year. The MyFlex learning and really engaging this timeframe of the, of a student's experience that really have the autonomy and the ownership of really becoming an independent learner, which is ultimately the goal. And lastly, just featuring game engagement, next steps, the scheduling committee is working on elements of change potentially for the following year. And that really working with the school council as well for that accountability piece. And that's it for the high school. So I'm happy to take any comments or questions. Thank you.
Questions? Paul, the biggest question I have revolves around employment and the career services that we do. If, if the goal is enlistment, enrollment or employment, you know, hiring people as I do currently, it's all about their experiences coming into a job.
Right.
How, how are we trying to ensure that everyone gets a touch of outside work in one shape or form, whether it's they're actually have a job or if they're part of a career service that we're going through? Because that's a lot of jobs for kids.
Absolutely. And I think that MyCap experience, Mr. Young, is exactly where that begins. When you look at a ninth grader coming in and really the MyCap is even something that could even be sent even further down into the middle level. But the MyCap starting in grade nine really begins to really envision students to where they think they want to be. And then really making sure the fact that in our pathways, this innovative pathway experience has really changed a lot of the trajectory for us. Because you can take the core courses that every student needs to have, right? And be looking at really what are the skills that they're doing that then really engages them to start the, the course for them when they get to grade 12 for an internship. And really what we, just actually this morning, Mr. Cupy and I were meeting about, how do you take this year's senior class, looking at all, every single one of them and really where are their internships taking them? And then begin the process of really, well, what are the trajectories that we can be creating with that? You know, for example, if we have a student who has no desire to go on to a four-year school and that they have met every requirement for graduation and by grade 12, all they need is English and PE. If they've met all those requirements, why aren't we creating an opportunity for them to do a full work study in, in, in a business or in a company or in a trade? Working with students to make sure the fact that they're, have the credentialing or at least have set the credentialing for themselves to be able to apply to a union. And that's ultimately where we are now, that these internships are no longer just simply the one period or two blocks of a day. It really becomes the ability for us to be able to create a real future-ready experience. So when that student leaves us and goes to interview in a place, that they're able to say that here's the body of work that we have, we've been talking about doing on electronic portfolios for students. So they can be really building their own capacity as they're moving through the grades and having experiences that really connect to them so that it takes them on their journey whenever they're going out to apply for a job or potentially an internship provider as well.
And I guess the related question from me revolves around the Braga program. Because from lots and lots of kids I've talked to over the period in time, I think the, the piece that always strikes me with those kids is they'll tell you to a person they never intended to go to college, right? But going to college and high school, they recognize, these are kids who were bored away. They recognize that it was different. And what they thought about school in the high school setting was fundamentally different what they got from a college.
Right.
And to their credit, most of them have attended college in some way, shape or form because of that. So to me, it's a balance too, right? So to me, it's a balance too, right? Which is, you have a lot of these kids who are not sure what they want to do, pretty sure going in, they don't want to go on to college. But then they get a taste of something different, and they're like, wow, that's not what I expected from college.
Right. Yep, and that early college experience, to your point, is that the students that oftentimes that we will kind of go after and say, we really want you to do this course, you may want to think about it. It's very purposeful in really seeing that students, that it may not be immediately after they graduate from Middleborough High School where college is in their view, but we want them to be able to see that it could be in their view, and it is in their view if they choose to take it.
And I guess related to that, Paul, I know over the period of time, it has been, it has gotten more and more problematic to continue with that program. Do you see that becoming less problematic, or do you see pieces still continuing that will be some problem, but we're going to try to work around?
Yeah, I think, I think we are working, we have a great relationship with Massacoy, and, and I think that is allowing us to be able to work through the changes over time. You know, going from sending students to the Middleborough campus and feeling like they were going to this college, that said something. Now they, it is done here at the high school where the professors either come to us or it's done virtually. And it's still creating the same experience. They have to go through the college application process, they have to take the Accuplacer test. So there's this, this regiment they have to go through because they are actually a college student when they're sitting in that class. And I think that that, between that partnership and with the management that Tammy Miller, the school to grade coordinator provide, I think we're in good form.
Mr. Chair, through you. So I just wanted to piggyback onto this, but for two reasons. The reason the first initiative of the strategy is personalized learning for all students has to do with exactly this issue, that we recognize that we have to prepare students for whatever awaits them. Gone are the days where we can just plan for every student to attend a four-year college. One of the things I wanted to talk a little bit about is this Youth Works partnership that we're now in the second year of, through the work of Mr. Kevin Avatabley and Mr. Josh Porter. What that program really involves is funding where we are hiring students, placing them in jobs, they are being paid to build that resume. So as you had mentioned earlier, hey, you know, when I want to hire a student, I want to hire a student with colorable experience and skills that they've acquired. That's exactly what's going on at Middleborough High School. So you, you know, depending on what track you want to be in, depending on what avenue you want to explore, those options need to be available to all students, all learners, so that they have the freedom to take an AP class, to partner with Youth Works, using a community partner like Borough Bot or some of the other businesses here in town where they can actually procure employment and develop those skills. And I have to tell you, I was in a town meeting today with the town manager, Jay McGrail, and the town's the recipient of a continuation of that grant through the state for $100,000 for students ages 18 through 24. So this is something that, it's not just us in terms of looking at that, we are working hand-in-hand with the town on how to keep programs like that alive so that kids are really ushered into the workforce, if the workforce is their choice, as you said, enlistment, enlisting, or, or enrollment ultimately. So I just wanted to make sure we talked a little bit about that Youth Works grant, because it's a very, you know, it's through Mass Hire, and it's been a very, very successful program that we're hoping to grow in the years to come.
Great.
Other questions? Paul, the last piece too, that I just want to, if you could touch upon a little bit, the enlistment portion. I know what we do to recognize students who are going into the service, but can you talk a little about before that? Because I find it interesting when you have conversations with the recruitment people, they like this school because it seems like we're an open school to allow them in more often than not, whereas that's not always the case for them. So can you talk about sort of the up to, if you will, Flag Day when we
Sure.
And graduation when we recognize?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Young. So we work really closely with the military branches and recruiters. As you know, there hasn't really been an opportunity to have in-person visits and all of that, and that's not changing, it's getting back to that. And so we work with them to identify times during the course of the year where that we would have the different branches come in. We have a person within our school counseling department who becomes the liaison to the, to the U.S. military. So Mrs. Breton, who's our new school counselor, she actually is the one who would work with recruiters, plan the schedule and all of that. And one of the things that we've been really talking about is, is really how do you engage even families in the community about it as well? And what we've been exploring is based upon a school in our region that had, had tried this, is really you almost, if you have a career fair, you have a college fair, that you create an opportunity where you're bringing in all the branches at the same time, and allowing students to be able to come in and really be able to see the different opportunities that could be there for them. And you do it just like you would do an evening college fair or something along that line. And, and that is something we're kind of, kind of navigating and exploring to be the potential of that, because we know the fact that for many of our students, that that becomes an unbelievable opportunity for them. And we want to make sure the fact that for those students who are really interested in it, that they have all the opportunities to be able to see it. And then really our celebrations that we've done because of that, you know, and this is all unfortunately pre-COVID, but we would do the Flag Day ceremony, and we would really recognize those seniors who are, have made the decision to be able to, to defend our country, and we feel that's a pretty big deal. Thanks. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brand again. With that, I will turn into the next school improvement plan presentation for the John T. Nichols Middle School with Principal Heather Tucker. I know that she submitted this plan in the Dropbox, so you've had time to review it, but I'll call her up so that she can talk a little bit about improvement at this school as well.
It's always a lot to go after, Brand, so, you know. So thank you for having me this evening and the opportunity to talk about the Nichols School Improvement Plan. First and foremost, I'm excited that we have, we have expanded our school council by an additional parent and teacher, and I think that's just exciting that we have the commitment from our, our faculty and families to want to work through school council to make the Nichols, you know, a continuously improving place. A little bit just about my process as leading through a school improvement process. I always go through, I take the, the district strategic plan, your strategy plan. We took the, the actual district goals, and we start going through those, and we use those as our method and manner in which we draft our Nichols School Improvement Plan to ensure that we have that continuity, the consistency, the connection to the bigger plan. And I find that's really important, particularly when, I like to call the Nichols the sandwich school. We're right in the middle, so it's really important we know what's coming up. It, no, it's important for us to know where we need to be so we can function right in the middle. In our goals, one of the things that has been, I think widely talked about at the Nichols School is the need for continuity and consistency. And when you're hearing the need for continuity and consistency, it's really important to go sort of back to basics and to sort of level set everybody to build a common understanding, common language, and, and start almost as a place of even though you have some new educators, you have some veteran educators, for everyone to have a common language from which to work from, a common understanding from which to work from. I'm excited by the school council members themselves. But when you look through our plan and goal one, we really want to look at how we're increasing student achievement. And it's really important to utilize the tools that we have in order to measure how our students are growing, so looking at that 360 benchmark, our writing benchmarks, our panorama. So just some quick hits about what we're looking for, for tiered instruction and tiered intervention, is really having a common language and a common framework from which to base all of our conversations on. The second part is to calibrate our expectations. Are we looking at things the same way, in the same method, in the same manner, with the same understanding? So really, we're looking to dig through and unpack our data and look at student work samples and engage in those types of conversations, particularly aligned to the tiered, to the tiered interventions, those tiered same pieces, the mass tiered system of, the multi-tiered system of supports. And then again, as an administrative team, are we looking at things the same way, the same approaches? So now we're all communicating consistently to families with the same language, so everybody's on the same page. For us, I think one of the things that it's really important, the MTSS isn't just academic, but it also includes the PBIS. Our PBIS team has actually partnered with the students who went to the MARK Peer Leadership Program, and together that collaborative work through our PBIS system and the MARK students, setting the lessons, those targeted words of the month for us to build those character-strong, character traits. We're also looking at how do we carry that forth, not just from an assembly once a month, but how does that build further into the classrooms? How does that build across the building? How does that build across the community? So we're looking to launch that in December, so there will be more information to come, which will be exciting. Again, we're really looking at our structures and systems for that continuity, for the consistency, and we really want to look at the ways that we are looking at student success and really looking at it from a data-based decision-making. And how are we looking at that personalized learning for all students? So when we're doing that, we're looking at those tiered interventions. How are we supports, how are we supporting students? Students who, as Dr. Mark Alitis had talked to, are at the cusp, that need the push to just make those couple extra points. You know, what are our practices? Where are, where are our holes? Where are our gaps? I appreciate the question earlier about writing, particularly at the Nichols. What we're finding for students in middle schools, we need to build some perseverance. We need to build some grit through the writing process. Writing is not easy. So through our actual department meetings and faculty meetings, we've been talking about this win block, this intervention block, and part of building our continuity and consistency through those multi-tiers, we're actually focused on writing, and we've been looking at different writing protocols that we can do based on the different content areas. It's interesting because you'll hear students say, well, I don't write in science. You actually do write in science. There is mathematical writing, and it's orientating ourselves to understanding what writing actually means in math. What does that actually mean in science? Because you're writing all day long, you just might not be identifying that as writing. So we're really looking at where students need that personalized learning success. What does that mean for students? For us, we are thinking about those enrichment opportunities. You know, I'm, I'm so pleased that we have a strong music program. The marching band information is coming out for students who participate in that. We have our orchestra, our band, we have the Wizard of Oz, we have a, you know, the MIA level of athletics, but we also have intramurals for students who don't want to engage. We have the GSA, the yearbook committee. There are a lot of different activities that help students find what they like, what they want to do, and I appreciate the, the variety, but I think it's also important to come back to students. What's your choice? What's your voice? What are you looking for? And finding opportunities for students to be able to take on leadership roles, and it's not always the same students taking on leadership roles. So that's what we are looking for and how we're able to do that through that personalized learning and success. So we're hoping to look for students to take more ownership. And one of the conversations we've been engaging in, in a faculty is, what does it look like at the start of sixth grade and what does it look like at the end of sixth grade? What does it look like when you start seventh grade to the end of seventh grade? What are those gradual releases of autonomy, ownership, responsibility? And so part of our conversations are vertically through departments, they are cross-teamed. We're working on some subcommittee work where we're examining our current practices, where teachers from different departments and grade levels all engage around examining, what have we been doing and what do we need to do and how do we make things better? And we're, we actually spent this afternoon doing some root cause analysis about what is it that has gotten, where are we? What are our strengths and where do we need to continue to go? And part of that is looking at the students and what do the students need? And what do they want that motivates them to come to school? Everybody on that stage is motivated by something different. So what is it that the students are interested in? Are you somebody who loves writing and looked at the seventh grade spooky stories and had pages? Or are you somebody that had a paragraph and that's not your love? But when the sixth grade was doing the hands-on archaeological dig that really made social studies come to life for you and you were really interested in that? What are those academic pieces? What are those social pieces? And, and when students are doing well, how are we recognizing that? So we're looking at our, how to build our tiger stripe program, how to build our ROR assemblies, how do we build parents into those processes? And I also think it's important to acknowledge, we have a building schedule that we needed to put into place, and we're finding, we're finding some, we're finding some pieces that need to be addressed, we're finding some pieces that need to be worked on, and that's okay. I think what you do is you identify it, you say, you know, here's things that we need to continue to grow and work on, and what does that need, what does that have to look like? So one of our subcommittees is around the win time, and what does that mean? So we're, we're providing opportunities and building opportunities for people to engage in this continuity and consistency of expectations, practices, through processes and procedures, which gives everybody that set framework to have common conversations and build from. The last goal is around communication. And really trying to look at some of the district resources, the communication guide is really robust to talk about how parents should expect communication, what kind of communications. I think when you have things that test your systems, test your limits, you find areas that you can do better, try and work on. How do we better use Tiger Times? You know, so through PTA, I've gotten feedback on better about Tiger Times from the school council. What else can we do in Tiger Times? Just different families who are asking about different things. How do we use that as a more robust means of communication for families? How do we use class tags in a more timely, efficient, for quick information that families need to know? And then trying to find ways to promote all of the good things that are happening at Nichols. There are so many wonderful things happening every day in the classrooms with student engagement, kindness that we see with one another, and how are we sharing that with families? How are we able to, you know, promote what we do? I think there are so many wonderful things that are happening that we just haven't been great about celebrating and sharing, and I think it's time for us to be able to do that and finding forums to get feedback from the community, from families, for us to be able to listen, to be able to make adjustments to our practices. So those are sort of short, sweet, hoping everything that gets integrated into our, our Nichols School Improvement Plan. There's a lot of great things that are on deck and happening, and I'm excited to be able to show you at the end of this year, all that we have been able to work on and accomplish.
Related to what Paul had said earlier, can you talk a little bit about how the new schedule helps to promote the goals?
Yes. So our Nichols schedule at this time, with the way that it is set up, we had had our homeroom, which we needed for that ongoing dismissal. We had had an extension block that was first thing in the morning, and I think what we noticed with having that block built that way was students didn't necessarily come in and get engaged in academic classwork the moment that we're walking in. And what we have now is first block starts at 7:57. I think there are some places and spaces where students said, well, I did my work, I'm not sure, I don't, and took a little bit more time. If you are entering the building after 7:55, you are marked tardy. You need to be in school, prepared to learn by 7:55. So I think that has set a tone and a change. Our classes are 65 minutes of direct instruction. I think as we're engaging our conversations around what our instructional practices are. I think as we're engaging our conversations around what our instructional practices are, we're looking at how are we utilizing that time in terms of, you know, not just a stand and deliver. For example, in tomorrow's Tiger Times, you'll see about the archaeological dig that the sixth grade went on. We're able, you know, how are we maximizing those hands-on opportunities? We do have that win block, which is that MTSS block. And we have identified, how are we targeting writing and writing instruction? And so students will be writing across the content areas daily. And just, they're not supposed to be big. They're not supposed to be across multiple days. But it is get in, read, respond. You know, respond in a creative way, respond in a mathematical way, respond in that scientific knowledge way. So students understand that writing comes in many different forms. So that's how we've been able to put more time on learning. We don't have a five-minute homeroom, students dismiss from their last class. So we're teaching up to the dismissal bell at 2:55. So I feel like we've reallocated our time. And I think it's sort of a result of the pandemic. We were in survival mode for a while, and we were really focused on making sure that students were feeling safe to come to school and, you know, those basic needs. And we've been saying this year, it's time to put our lens back on learning, teaching, instruction, curriculum. And I feel that our new schedule has really allowed us to put that lens back on learning. And I think the School Improvement Plan shows our lens is really tied to that learning and getting every student what they need.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Jessica.
I appreciate that both you and Bran mentioned the evaluation of a schedule. You put a new schedule in place, you want to evaluate it. So I appreciate that both of you are looking at it. One of the things that Bran mentioned was pulling the students to get their feedback on it. I'd actually just been having a conversation with my son about that process this morning. So is that something that you might be able to also implement at the middle school and just kind of get that feedback directly from the students as to how they're feeling about, especially the eighth graders probably, how they're feeling about the adjustment in the schedule and how it impacts their feelings about their learning and their progress through the day?
We can definitely look at that. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I was looking at the goal to cultivate the sense of belonging at Nichols. And I don't think we can actually address belonging there until the overall culture of the school has been addressed. I mean, I don't think it's any secret in town that many parents, many students are upset with the overall culture at the school, whether it be bullying, not feeling a sense of belonging, the behavior issues at the school. Is there any way that you can maybe walk us through what's been done? Steps that have been taken to improve that? Because you're having kids that are going from sixth to eighth grade that are walking into a building every day that they hate going to.
So absolutely. I think there's some different data points that are really important to consider when we're thinking about student. And I think this is part of when I'm talking about we're not celebrating enough of the good things that are happening here at Nichols, because I think that narrative needs to change. And I feel that there are some places and spaces where the Nichols culture is being painted with a broad stroke from some of previous things. So for example, for Nichols, we have had a significant decrease in vandalism. And so the people to ask are really asking the custodians, are asking the cafeteria crew, who are in the cafeteria 90 minutes every single day. And what they've been able to share, and I was really actually pleased because the cafeteria staff came, I did a listening forum a couple weeks ago, and they were actually able to speak about the improvement in the cafeteria in terms of student behavior, in terms of the cleanliness, in terms of entering, exiting the cafeteria. They've really, even Food Service Director Bagnell came in today to say like, wow, it is such a change. And she's not in our building. Often she comes in when, you know, she may need to fill in or she needs to talk to the kitchen director. And she said, it's just so different. I think there are things that the teachers have said, and comments that the teachers have said of, wow, students aren't afraid to walk down the hall anymore. And I think some of those things are putting the lens back on learning. One of the things, we have a few small things that we are doing at the Nichols, such as our attendance. Every classroom needs to take attendance within the first five minutes. So what it should do is if you're showing up and you're tardy and you're late, and that's an opportunity for a conversation with the teacher, because we start instruction and you need to be here for it, that communicates to students, I need to get to class. The hallway's not a place to hang out. I need to, I need to move and kind of get to where I need to be. That's one of the things that we have talked about is the attendance, e-hall pass. You must use e-hall pass because there are some places and spaces where we have students that we need to not allow into a restroom at the same time. So our e-hall passes have an opportunity for what's called polarity. So what that would mean is if Superintendent Lyons and I are not allowed to use the bathroom and the hallway at the same place, we put polarities in. So if I try to use the e-hall pass to use the restroom and she's out in the hallway of the restroom, I can't go because she's out there. So we have said to the staff, we really need to do that. We actually add, we've been talking about addressing smaller behaviors because when you're addressing smaller pieces of behavior, such as making sure that your cafeteria is clean or keeping your feet on the floor. I know they're middle school, everybody wants to dunk the doorways. Like, nope, stop, go back, walk again. Nope, stop, walk, go back and try it again. We walk in a hallway, we don't jump in the hallway. And it's all of, if we focus on really small things, we can't quite get to the big things. Because if we're identifying those small things. So even taken out of yesterday's presentation, the presentation by Elizabeth Englander from the MARK, there was a, it's called gateway behaviors. They're little things. It's an eye roll, it's a sigh, it's a, granted, within context, but it's actually addressing those small things. So we talked about today at our faculty meeting of when you see the eye roll, it's not about, even if it's at, you know, Superintendent Lyons, it's not addressing that on her behalf, but that's not a behavior we have in this classroom. And it's taking the opportunity to stop the sigh, the eye roll, the grouch. And I get, they're middle school kids. So we're doing that within reason. However, if we stop and say, that behavior is unacceptable. I don't like the way it makes me feel, and I don't want you rolling your eyes at me. Even if it wasn't me, I didn't do it. I'm just setting expectation. We don't act like that. And if I now have 100 teachers all addressing the small gateway behaviors that end up rolling into those bigger parts and pieces, we stop those things from happening in the immediacy, in the moment, and at the very beginning. And if we're doing it consistently as a staff and a faculty, the research shows, particularly what we learned yesterday, is we don't get to those bigger pieces. You don't have that same level. And that's one of the ways in which you build culture. So the other thing in ways in which we build culture is going to, is through our PBIS system and that MARK, that MARK Peer Leadership. So students are actually feeling pretty excited that we have some different places where kids are leaders. And we have our Tiger Stripes going. So we're trying to make sure that we're capturing students being good. We are actually tracking how many Tiger Stripes students are getting so we can recognize the student that earns the most Tiger Stripes. You know, and kids are excited. The Tiger Stripes are a big deal. Like, it really is a big deal. And, you know, it really is a note home to say like, wow, you did this. This was helpful. They have the bracelet. You know, we're asking, we're actually asking students to help us come up with ideas because you want a different Tiger Stripe. And if you have the same color Tiger Stripe every single year, well, you already have one. So we actually have been engaging in different conversations with students of what color should sixth grade have? What color should seventh grade have? What color should eighth grade have? Are there certain ones? So that way, that's a culture thing. You want, you want that. And that's how you are building some of that sense of belonging, inclusion, when students want to do the right thing and want to be seen as doing the right thing. You're raising expectations. And then it's when somebody else isn't doing that, I'm not interested in that. I don't want to, I don't want to be part of that. I'm being rewarded for doing the things that we want to see in terms of behaviors. And I think students are motivated by that. I think it's building those different connections with trusted adults and making sure that students have trusted adults to be able to go through. I think it's important to look at our counseling. I know in the springtime, Nichols, for myriad of reasons, was short-staffed in the counseling department. We have a full, robust counseling department. And I think that makes a really big deal. So students who need something have a place to check in, have a place to go. And then student discipline-wise, we are holding a firmer line with giving out detentions in the cafeteria, removing students if you are not acting the way that you should. Nope, you need to go to the office and you sit there. And if we have repeat offenders, that becomes a detention. If we're asking you the last two minutes of lunch to quiet down so that you are calm exiting the cafeteria, kids want to talk at lunch. We totally get that. You've been sitting all day, you want to see your friends, you want to have that chitchat, you feel a little up. It's exciting. But we need you to come back down as you're entering the learning spaces again so you're not disrupting other students' learning. And if we're asking, okay, in the last two minutes, it's time to turn on your voice and we're dismissing the tables that are quieter first. If somebody's not doing that, being able to say, okay, you've had a warning. You've been told, now you have an after-school detention. And so we are doing more that way. And I think if, I do wonder if when we say like, tell me how school's going, students might say, well, I'm getting detentions and I don't like it because the rules are a little bit more stringent. But we're prepared for that, but that's okay. But it's balancing, what are those? We're actually looking at like a participation grade for the win blocks for students. We recognize that we're asking students to do things that are hard, but how can we reward you? And the clusters are actually trying to do cluster rewards that if their, if their cluster can earn so many participation points, then they'll allow them to take a win block to do games. Like, those are all things that you're getting rewarded for hard work. That feels good. You're being recognized for what you're doing. That builds the culture, that builds that inclusivity, that builds the belonging, making sure we have the wide variety of after-school activities for athletes, for students who aren't in drama, for students who like chess club or yearbook. There's something for everybody. All of that helps to feel welcome in where you are.
Other questions?
How you doing? Both my kids are at the Nichols Middle School right now. I think part of the culture problem is you really need to promote the wins. You don't ever have to promote the losses because everybody on social media will
Do it for me.
And on and on and on and on and on about it. But I never see any wins on social media. So I think Nichols Middle School should definitely start talking a little bit about, a little bit more about the positives. Because like I said, we all hear about the negatives. That'll help, and the parents need to buy into. You know, we, and I own it, we're all part of the negative culture, and we need to try to change that as well. Two quick things. What time is the first lunch at Nichols Middle School?
It depends on the day because we have a five-day rotating schedule. There is one lunch that starts at 10:11 and one that starts at 10:41.
It's a long time till the end of the day without anything to eat. I know I'd be grumpy by the end of the day if I had to go that long without a snack. What was the other thing? Can't remember the other thing right now, but my son got a Tiger Stripe and that was a big, a big boost to all of us. I just wish they pronounced his last name correctly when they announced it.
They can't spell our last name correctly, usually.
Well, congratulations to the Tiger Stripe. I'm sure we'll be counting for more.
Yeah, there was something else, but I can't think of it right now. But those were my only comments.
Reach out, reach out if there's something else or it comes back or there's another question I can answer.
I can't remember what I was going to say.
Jeff, do you have a question?
I just wanted to make a comment. In terms of the reaching out to get a different sense of the culture and how things are going at the Nichols, I did actually contact the head custodian at Nichols back at the beginning of October, just asking for the sense from, it was when there was a lot going on that was being publicized on social media as negative. And I just wanted to get a different opinion as to kind of how everything was. And from his perspective, did he feel that behavior was improving, getting worse? Asking about cafeteria, hallways, classrooms, bathrooms, all of the above. And he did give me permission to share some of his feedback if it ever became appropriate. And he said he's been in charge of the Nichols facility staff for 22 of the 24 years the building's been open. And the two years he wasn't, it was because he was here at the high school, helping get everything set. He said in general, vandalism levels are the highest in every school system at the middle school level, but just how serious the damage gets can be very cyclical. Although some administrations have been more effective than others at controlling the school, it has always been dependent on how destructive the grades are in the buildings each year. He was able to cite, without searching, four years in particular that were not high points for him on his job. But he said the current level of destructive behavior is not particularly high at all. Vandalism levels throughout the building and on campus, noise and mess levels in the cafeteria, et cetera, have been what I would consider lower than average recently. We had a little bit of a spike in damage to the building late last spring, but that's a pattern he's seen for 27 consecutive school years. The current Nichols administration made some changes in policy and procedure that have definitely helped to control the situation. And at no point has the state of the facility approached the worst levels he's seen throughout the years. He feels a gradual return to fully populated building following the COVID shutdown is helpful in keeping the recent damage level low. And he'd say that pre-COVID, at times, we had nearly twice the vandalism that we do today. So just a perspective to put on it. I know it's
I take that as a win. If we're talking about wins, like, I feel like that's a win, right?
And I agree. I think that what's happening now always seems the worst, and it's what you're going through and it's what our students are going through. And we don't want them to go through that. But it was helpful for me to kind of put in perspective. Middle school's tough. Middle school's always been tough. I remember middle school, junior high, being tough. But it was nice to kind of get that perspective that it isn't as bad as it has been. There's always room for improvement. But I did appreciate his sharing that feedback because it's, it's an opinion that isn't necessarily one we usually hear, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Tucker. That completes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is just a reminder for those attending the MAS, MAS Conference. It is next week.
Sorry, Rich, I can't hear you. Can you say that again?
It's next week. Chair, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Just want everyone to know it pertains to fundraisers and approval warrants. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We approve school improvement plans. So the chair wants to entertain a motion to approve the high school and Nichols Middle School Improvement Plan.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the last action item we have is we have a surplus, which is a school van. Can you tell us a little about that, Superintendent?
Sure. This vehicle is at School Street and currently off the road. It's not in use, hasn't been in use for some years. It has extensive body rot and issues with the frame. It also had very high mileage. And for those reasons, had been taken off the road some years ago. Given that it is just sitting there, at this time, we'd like to surplus this equipment because it is not serving a purpose.
Chair, I want to entertain a motion to surplus the van.
Second.
Discussion. Just so everyone knows, the way the surpluses go, they go to town departments first. And then after that, usually what happens is if no town department claims something, Hutch usually finds a way to make a little bit of profit, but the profit goes back to the town. So just so everyone's aware of that. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our next meeting is November 16th, 2023. And with that, chair, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Quick question. Sorry for that next meeting. I think it's scheduled to be here, but they have final dress rehearsal that night.
Yeah, we'll move it, it's not a problem. It'll be, it'll be all set. I knew that ahead of time.
All right.
So we usually move it to the middle school. So a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Nobody ever opposes that one.